Administration group, I wanted to thank Dr. McNamara and the Board of Ed for successful negotiations. We wrapped up, I know, last, this past summer and went to the board vote in September. So I did not get to formally thank you folks for the work you put into the negotiation process. And allowing us to do it this way went very smoothly for, I think, for both sides. And so we appreciate your support and we look forward to continuing to work with you to make the school a better place for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
You too.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comments? Okay. So that will bring us to the student representative reports.
Hey, hello, everyone. These past weeks have been busy but a fulfilling month for students, with last week being our spirit week and following with our homecoming, dig pink and, what's the word? Yeah, okay. It was very good. It was very eventful. Many people participated, which especially class of 2026, which they're pretty known for not doing much, but senior year came through. This past month, we've had our college fair for juniors and seniors with colleges coming to Ram High School to recruit students. With our athletics, we've had a new record set in our girls' volleyball team by Meredith Year since 2009 with the highest amount of aces at our school. Moving forward in October on the 23rd, we have our choir and band with their fall concert and upcoming field trips from only one club and room two class. And today, actually, there was a field trip for some students with leadership and empowerment. You know, it was a very insightful, very enjoyable field trip. Thank you. You said? Oh.
I didn't even.
No, they're not. Okay, that's fine. Sorry. No, I didn't mean to put you on the spot like that. Um, okay. So that brings us to the, um, oh, Avery's got something. Okay, I'm sorry. I thought that was universal.
At the beginning of October, we had Custodian Appreciation Day. The Student Council made goodie bags to give to custodians. On Wednesday last week, the eighth graders took PSA teams, band and chorus concert is on Thursday. And this week on Friday, the Student Council is hosting the school dance to celebrate Halloween.
Okay, great. So, welcome, you guys. Thank you very much for agreeing to participate in this process. Brianna, it's your second year. You're a senior this year, so you've got one year left. Yusuf will serve two years, junior and senior year, and Avery as the eighth grade rep will serve one year. So, thank you. It's time out of your schedule, you know, when you're so busy, but we really appreciate you coming and your input and your ideas. Next month, the board will have a new makeup after the election. So we have several members who are running again for election and we have some members who are going to be moving on. So, um, Gabe, like, um, and Joe, um, thank you very much for, um, you guys have put years into this. So really appreciate all your efforts on the subcommittees and all the time. It takes all of my phone calls, random asking questions. What do you think about this? So I appreciate all the time that you've put in. Um, do you want to?
Yeah, so I just, on behalf of the district and faculty and staff, I also would just like to echo the thanks to Mike Passett Down. Thank Joe and Gabe and Mike. I was talking to Heather on the phone today and I said we need to identify new, entirely new facility subcommittee, because one election is wiping out so many subcommittees. But when I think about the, I mean, just in my short time here with just, just with regards to facilities, the amazing things that have happened, particularly as it relates to our athletic fields, you know, we've done so much, I mean, just so much work to improve our athletic facilities. We just completed the track, obviously, which was a multimillion dollar project and just everything. I just can't thank you guys enough for, for all you've done for the districts. You were, of course, a part of the board that hired me three years ago. And I appreciate you guys putting your faith in me and I appreciate all the support that you provided to me and the administrative team and really teachers and staff and students of the district in the three years that I've been here and the time that you've been on the board. So, thank you all. Thank you all. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Colin mentioned the track and the field. If you haven't been out to see it, it's really beautiful. Thanks to the facilities committee for putting that together. It was, you know, there's a lot of work that went into that. Brianna, did you mention that you guys did homecoming last week? Yep. So that was, you know, between the football game and the dance, a lot of great activities here in the school. Coming up this week, Thursday, the Fall and Band Chorus Performance. So if you've never been to watch the band and the chorus, they are really amazing. Absolutely amazing. It's really an enjoyable night. So if you have the time, I would encourage you to, to get out and see it. And that brings us to you.
So I, again, have been certainly sad to see our board members that are departing, leaving, but I'm excited to have new student board representatives. And I also wanted to make sure I welcome to Avery and Yusuf. You know, Brianna is going to show you guys how to do a great job representing the student body. And it's really important that we have you here as a member, as student representatives of the board, for you to bring voice, the student voice, to these conversations that can sometimes be a little weighty and a little cumbersome. So I appreciate your, your willingness to be on, on the board and serve as representatives. Just really quickly, you know, Heather mentioned the, the track. It opened up at the beginning of this month. We had, opened it up, had a soccer game, I think, two or three days later, had a football game the day after. It is absolutely spectacular. They did a great article about it in the River East, which I was certainly happy about. Again, just we've done so much with regards to improving our athletic facilities for our student athletes and really the broader community, because that track is going to be something that really the community as a whole can use. And I love it when I can say that a project came on time and under budget. It's always good when, when that happens, because that is not always the case. I'm going to keep my remarks short, because we have a great student presentation tonight. And so I will conclude my superintendent's report at that point.
And that brings us to the student presentation of Drama United.
So I'll just say a couple of things. So it's not, it's not a secret to anybody here on the board that drama, unified sports and Drama United are a couple of my favorite things. I'm always telling board members, if you get a chance to go to Drama United, make sure you get there. This year it worked out, that I don't have to actually, you don't have to, you should still go. It's the 30th, I believe, the 30th of, at the end of this month, so you should still go. But we brought a little bit of Drama United here and we've got some students and parents and faculty that are here. And I appreciate everybody coming.
All right. So hello, my name's Emerson Melkis. I'm a senior here at Ram and I'm the head director for Drama United, which is primarily student run. Behind me are a lot of our peer helpers and a lot of the participants and also some of my co-directors. We have, yeah, we have a great song to sing tonight that really encompasses what we do at Drama United, which is to create a safe space for students of all abilities to come together and be a part of something and, you know, make a great show with their peers here at Ram, no matter what your abilities are. We do both onstage and backstage stuff. And behind you are actually Vivian and Maddie, who are our backstage directors this year. And yeah, we have a song called "We Are Unified" that we're gonna sing real quick. So come on. I thought you already said. So you're just gonna stand over here. No, you guys are. Awesome. So, baby? He's like, give me space. I'm just gonna set this up super quick, because I'm actually writing an article in the Rambler this month about Drama United and what's, what it's all about. Don't laugh at me. We have a song here, right? We have a shake. I know some of y'all do. Thank you so much. And we have posters over here for teachers or just anyone who wants to put them up anywhere. The show is October 30th at 6 o'clock in the high school auditorium. Admission is free and everyone is welcome. And there will be a short intermission where the class of, Sarah, what's your class?
The freshman.
The freshman class, sorry. The freshman class will be selling snacks to help fundraise for their class. So if you'd be like, supporting a great extracurricular activity at Ram and also a freshman class, then we would love to see you there. All right, thank you.
Okay, that brings us to item nine on the agenda, the consent agenda.
Uh, yeah, I feel like it's going to be a letdown from here on out with the rest of the meeting. So you guys know that. Thank you guys so much for being here. I really appreciate it. And don't feel compelled to stay. You guys are awesome. Thank you, thank you. Unfortunately, we have to do a whole business meeting now, so we're just gonna kind of roll. The consent agenda has just a few things in it. Approval of minutes from the September 15th meeting and then just a few policies that are going for a second reading. These are policies that came to the board in the September meeting. It actually had no feedback, no questions, no concerns or recommended changes. So my recommendation is to prove the consent agenda as presented.
Hey, do we have a motion?
I'll move and approve the consent agenda.
Drew Golfen, do we have a second?
All second.
Joe Paletti, any other discussion? Hey, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so, item 10, new and unfinished business.
So item 10.1 is just a, it's a gift acknowledgement. We were very fortunate that a generous member of the community or generous members of the community, Eduardo and Alberto Pace are donating various machinist tools and equipment to our manufacturing program. We estimated that the approximate value of the equipment was about $7,895. It's a father-son who are making the donation. The father was a machinist and retired from his profession and didn't need the equipment anymore and knew that we could use it here in the community at Ram and use for our manufacturing program. And Paul Anush, our manufacturing teacher, was more than happy to, to take it and very appreciative of it as well. The, the board doesn't have to take any action to accept the gifts, per the policy, actually, that we just revised. It's the superintendent that accepts gifts. But I really think it's important when we have donations like this that we bring them to the board, we publicly acknowledge it. I do have a letter that will be sent to Mr., Mr., the two Mr. Paces tomorrow, just thanking them for their contribution to the school community. But obviously, just wanted to bring it up and share that information with the board.
That's great. Yeah, that is great. It is great.
Moving right along, item 10.2. We do an annual presentation of our student data. We're fortunate that we have students that continue to perform at very high levels. We have, obviously, a very strong instructional program here at Ram. We have very talented teachers and a very committed staff. And I have our two principals, Dr. Penny Brizziel and Dr. Michael Cerusi. We're going to talk about the data that is specific to the middle school and the high school. I think Penny's going to start us off with high school data. And then Mary Rose Mead, our director of curriculum and instruction, is going to follow that up with, what do we do with this data? How do we utilize it? So I know Eric's just got to pull up a brief presentation and then we'll go ahead and turn it over to our administrative team.
All right. Good evening, everybody. So we're going to start by just sharing what our assessments look like and the timing of them in the first slide. I'll wait for that to come up. All right. So at the high school, we have PSATs for grades nine, 10, and 11. And then for SATs, we have grade 11, which is the state standardized test for the high school, and GSS, which is the science assessment for grade 11. And then we have our AP Advanced Placement exams that are tied to our AP courses. And the Ram Middle School has smarter balance for grades seven and eight and GSS for grade eight and then grade eight PSATs as well. So as you can see, we have PSATs from eighth grade to 11th grade, which provides a lot of great data that can inform our instruction and also let us know how our students are doing along the way. So for the high school data, I'm going to start with PSAT 9. And this is just showing you the difference between our scores for 2024 or 2023, 24, and then 2024, 25 school year. You'll see that we have our mean scores, the ERWs, the English and reading, and then our math scores, and then the percentage that meets both benchmarks. Our scores in this, this is just showing that our one grade nine cohort did, did well, but then our, our next ninth, ninth grade class dipped down just a little bit. This doesn't really worry us, because this is just showing from one class to another. So it has nothing to do with showing with individual growth. It just happens to be the performance for a particular grade. And the same is true for PSAT 10. So we saw our English and reading, or, yeah, our reading and writing scores dipped down just a bit and then also, but then also our math going up a bit. Again, these scores are just showcasing what a particular grade does at that one moment in time. The good news comes later, so don't get worried by this. So going to our standardized test for grade 11, which is the test that the state of Connecticut uses to assess us across schools and districts. If you can go to the next slide here. So last year, we had our reading and writing score of 551, which is above the state average, our math score 531, well above our state average, and the total score of 1083, which again, well above the state average, which is the theme throughout all of our testing. The good news that I really am excited to share in our next slide is the cohort or SAT data over three years. Well, I'm sorry. No, this is actually not the stuff I'm excited about. It's coming after this. This is our, our English, our reading and writing score. You can see in 2023 was a 540. 2024 dipped down a little bit, but then 2025, it jumped really, up really high at 551, so that was exciting. But our math scores, you know, they started in 532 in 2023, went down a little bit in 2024, but kind of came back and stabilized in 2025. This, again, is just information about the different grade elevens and the different years, and it's not a cohort. So it's not showing growth or lower of scores in that cohort. So, but the next slide is all good news. We look at cohort data, which I think is what is really informing us and whether or not our students are growing along their way as they're with us. So you can see the class of 2025, they started with a total of 955 and went up 977, 999 to 1060 on their SATs. Same is true for the reading and for the math scores. And then when we look at class of 2026, our current seniors, their, their scores as well, from grade nine, 10, 11 to 12, increased over the years. And then our, same is showing for our current juniors, juniors, nine and 10, they went up from one grade to the next, or one year to the next. So the good news with all of this is that as our students move along in their grades here in the process, they do get better along the way. And that's what we're all about, is showing individual student growth. So I think this is the slide that really captures what we're doing here at Ram High School. Also, good news. Next slide, AP testing. Last year, we administered all of the tests that you see on this list that coincide with the coursework that we offer our students. And on the next slide, you'll see that the data for 2025, we had 356 tests taken. That's not equal to students. That's just a number of tests. It could be less students, because students are taking multiple tests. The number that scored three, four, or five, which is passing, is 341 of those tests. And the percentage of our students who are passing these is 96%. So pretty impressive that 96% of our students who are taking, who took an AP exam last year, passed and now have the ability to receive credit at the college level, possibly, depending on their college. So that's the exciting news that I have for you with the high school. I'll pass it along to Michael, unless there's any burning questions about high school data right now.
Okay. Excuse the call. Probably not a great spot.
So like the high school, we, we've been administering the PSAT for about eight years now, seven, eight years. And so we have data going all the way back to 2018, prior to COVID. You'll notice that right after COVID, we took a dip. We are starting to move back a little bit up on an upward trend, which is nice to see, if you go to the next slide. So we did some PSAT 8 comparisons. I think the one that's telling for me right, right at the moment is the 37% that met both benchmarks. We're seeing an increase in the number of kids coming back from 2022, 23. We went from 32% to 37% and English Language Arts, the ERW, 59 to 65. Math is pretty steady, right around 38 to 40%. And that's something that I know Ms. Rose Mead will talk a little bit about in a second, because we've had, we've had some interesting things with math, not just for us at Ram, but nationally and also locally. So we're starting to do a little more focus work on that, in that area. But just to give you some comparisons, you have the charts right there that you can take a look at year to year. We do, of course, if you look at the statistics, both state and nationally, we are well above the averages and the percentages. Do you have a smarter balance? The next one. So this slide also shows over the last seven years. Now, there is some data missing in between, and that was because of COVID. So the, prior to COVID was 2018, 19, and then 2021 was sort of if a year. But when you look across grade, seventh grade, and then eighth grade, you'll see on the eighth grade, we started making progress and gains. When you look at cohort data, we hover right around the same numbers. We're within 2%. We tend to take a little bit of a dip in eighth grade, but when you look at the high school scores, they keep going up. So that's something we continue to look at, and it's part of our data review on a regular basis. We look at data, actually, we've been looking at it this past month a little more intensely, about how can we help students? What, what skills are we missing? We're also working with Ascending Talents as well, trying to fill in some of those gaps. But overall progress, we do see progress overall, 712. Really good progress.
I feel like I should sing this or something. So what do we do with the data? And really, all data tells a story and gives us information. The standardized testing data points are really important, because as Penny and Michael said, we can look at one particular cohort over a period of time. And in doing so, we can drill down and see where, you know, where and how can we support not just that cohort, but our students in general. In this slide here, last year when I came in, I, I shared some data about the class of 2027. So we were talking about that growth piece. And I showed you how they did on their, from their PSAT 8 to their PSAT 9. So I pulled their, I was going to put them all here, but they didn't fit. All the circles didn't fit. So I just put in how they did on PSAT 10. So this is, this is our, our current junior class. And something that's important to know is that it's, it's great that we're seeing growth, but though each test gets a little bit more difficult. So growth isn't a given. On the PSAT 8, 9 to the PSAT 10, there's generally a dip, because it's a much harder test, right? So, but looking at this, you can see that that cohort of juniors have grown in each area, moving into those who meet or exceed expectations for mastery, moving up in each test over that time period. And so, again, this is, this is what we're working towards. We're working towards having our students grow. So for the, if you look at the next slide, and I shared a little bit of this last year, there's, there's long-term planning that a district can do and there's some short-term responses. So, you know, as we move forward, we can look at specific, if we see a specific area where we notice that we're continuously lagging or we're, kids are continuing to struggle. And that, a lot of times, will move even beyond this standardized testing. But we'll bring teachers together and say, where do we notice kids are struggling? What units are they struggling on? What do we need to do differently? What units are they struggling on? What do we need to do differently? But those kind of long-term data looks are things that we can use to help inform what we're going to do and the changes that we're going to make. Revising curriculum, right now, we're looking at that in several areas. Select research-based resources to support students. Using some new practices like learning walks, instructional rounds to see how the teaching that's happening is impacting student learning. And then providing professional development for teachers around areas that we know that we can improve. So that's that sort of long view that we have, we sit down and plan every year. But we also, we don't wait for those things to happen. So there are short-term responses that we can have. We can adjust course programming so that we're meeting needs of a particular group of students that we know needs special support. And then we use our existing interventions that we have, the things where we see that we have this in place already. How can we get the students into that place? Utilizing our math and literacy coaches, trying to capitalize on tutoring a lot. It's hard to get tutoring for like the high dosage tutoring. We really wanted to use that, but getting people that can come in for an hour a day, you know, it's been really difficult. But that's another possible avenue to use. And then targeting professional development areas where we know that we can have, have some more growth. So if you go to the next slide, so what are we doing now? What are we doing? So we made some pretty significant changes. We created, you know, for, for our reading support, we noticed there was a cohort of students that were still struggling when they came in. And we're a little bit beyond, below where we usually have students coming in. And one of our teachers noticed this data because actually faculty are starting to look more at data, particularly in the middle school right now and saying, hey, we're noticing these, this particular cohort needs more support. So that teacher and the head of the English department came to me and then I spoke with Christine Hartwig. And we were able to create a really targeted intervention for those students. Continuing collaboration with our sending elementary schools, which has just taken off beautifully. And those kinds of conversations are helping us be more prepared for the students that are entering our district and getting and understanding where their data is and what they find the student needs are. It's been really important. Using grant funding to support literacy programs and math support. We changed the structure of our high school math program so that we could start students a little bit further ahead in their freshman year. So we provided more access to students for the kinds of courses and the kinds of coursework that they need to be successful on the standardized tests and beyond. We continue to staff our math and writing labs, which is a commitment and an important one because it offers that support for students in real time, every single period, every day. We did some high dosage math tutoring last year. We had an opportunity to do that with some faculty. We launched a plan for faculty engagement with data analytics, which is happening really pointedly now in the middle school. High school's working on our NIASC accreditation, but data will be, will be coming there as well. And then exploring software where supports that are going to enhance student progress and growth. And revamping our middle school curriculum, which is for math, which is something that we've spent a couple of years exploring. And I'm really excited about because the districts that have made this move have been incredibly successful. And so I'm very excited about that. And that's, that's it for now. Any questions? Data questions, anyone?
No.
It's very interesting.
Well, yeah, I just was curious whether we do any other comparisons to different cohorts other than the whole state. Like schools from the same demographic or
Yeah, like our
Where do we fit in the whole thing like?
We look, we look at our Dirk, so like, and we, my thought I talked about because, so we say, oh, why, why is this school doing so? Because they have 46 children, you know, like, so it's really, that's the hard thing. Our Dirks are really funky Dirk to look in. We, but we have traditionally actually done very well in, in other Dirks that, you know, in comparison to other Dirks as well. So, but yeah, we, we look at, you know, we could talk about it all day long. If there's something you want to see, let us
Yeah, what I, what I would say is you, you want to use that as something to look at, but you don't want to put so much into it because, you know, Michael talked about this with seventh and eighth grade and Penny talked about with SATs and PSATs is it, it's really cohort data, right? You really want to see growth over time. And if you're comparing one eighth grade year to another eighth grade year or your, it really could fluctuate and, and, and you can, you can see that same thing when you look cohort data comparison. I'm sorry, when you look at grade level comparison across different schools. Because the cohort of students for us coming up from the elementary schools is going to vary from year to year. I, I do think, and you know, Mary Rose talked about the instructional collaborative that we really have, have worked on developing. In fact, I think we have our first meeting tomorrow morning of the year for the instructional collaborative. I mean, we've done so much over the past few years to try to really build a more cohesive group. When it, when we talk about our three sending districts, because it's really been kind of, you know, people just do their own thing and very, and, and I get it, right? It's tough to get people to come together, but, but the more cohesiveness that we have as a, as a larger, broader district, including our elementary feeding districts, the better it is. The more consistency that we're going to have. That's why, you know, we do things like them, with them, like review our portrait of a graduate or our skills and dispositions. You know, we've done things like share our instructional framework with them, you know, like those are all things that will benefit us for that long.
And they come visit.
Yeah. Visit us and, and see kind of like what the end result is for them, like what they're, what we are doing in the classroom, what teachers are doing in the classrooms, because all of those types of partnerships builds to a greater cohesion. There's still a lot of work for us to do in that regard, but we're making good steps in that direction.
Anybody else? Anybody online have a question? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Brings us to 10.3.
Yeah, so 10.3, I didn't include anything as a, as an enclosure for this one, because this is really just kind of like a, you just kind of have to do it. It's a, it's, it's an exercise, like a pro forma exercise almost, because what we're doing is, last year, the board may remember that we, we put in to be recognized at the Cade Couch Convention for a Board of Education Leadership Award. We met the criteria last year. We were one of seven or eight or 10 districts across the state to get the level one award. And we met the criteria again. I, I went through the checklist with Heather and we met all the criteria again to qualify for that level one award, hoping we can maybe step up and do a few more things that we need to do to, to, to get recognized for a level two award. But one of the things that we have to do in order to formally apply for the award is the board has to vote to approve applying for the award. So there's a recommended motion in your board notes that I would encourage the board to consider and vote on.
We need a motion to approve the application for the Cade Board Leadership Recognition Award. Gabe Marks, do we have a second?
Second.
Thurston Irlandson, any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain? Okay.
Well, so it is the first day of the Cades Caps Convention, which is coming up. And there's a few board members that are going. And if you are there on that first day of the conference, which is the Friday, boards that receive the award are recognized and we'll get our, another thing put on our plaque, which is nice. That's a new central office, so. I'm just keep rolling.
Yep.
All right, so we're going into policies, which I know is some people's favorite part of the meeting. It's me, who was telling me today how much she's intrigued by policy conversations. So we'll try to keep her interested. So the first policy is 10, I'm sorry, policy, really technically by law, 9313, suspension of board against. Oh, no, I apologize. I, I apologize. I missed one. All right, so the first one is policy 9347, corpsman voting. This is a simple revision that was made or really a, a, a simple reason to make the change that we made. And it's basically legislatively driven to reflect the fact that we now have remote meetings. This is a pretty simple one. Again, it was legislatively driven and recommended by our attorneys. With policies that that is applicable to, I actually can make the changes and simply inform the board about those changes. Because of the fact that this is a bylaw, I don't, I cannot do that. So I bring it to the board. The, these were all discussed at our policy subcommittee and there was no concerns about the changes to this one. I'll just keep rolling. If anybody has questions, we can get those. The next one is 9313, suspension of Board of Education policies for revision. There are minor changes in this policy to allow for the possibility of suspending regulations as well as policies. I think I got a little bit of feedback on this one after the subcommittee made the adjustments that were given to me. And I'm bringing to the revised version of it. The next one is 9345, public meetings and executive session. This is just for revision, really simple, minor language adjustments, very, very simple. It's just a cleanup, as you could see in the red line version that is in your board packet. But again, I can't do those simple cleanup ones for bylaws, which is why I'm bringing them to the board for a first read. The next one is 9400, adequate information to precede action for deletion. So, so this one garnered a lot of conversation at our, at our policy subcommittee. So this bylaw highlights only a, the way I looked at it, it was actually brought to me and recommended for, by our attorneys for deletion. And, and the primary reason is, is it, is it kind of says, this is something the superintendent should be doing. If the board is going to make a decision on something, I need to be able to provide the board with adequate information so that you all can make a more informed decision. Well, that is probably one one millionth of my job and we don't have a, a comprehensive thing that outlines all the different things that I am required to do as a superintendent. And so hence the reason for the recommendation for deletion that was initially brought to the committee. However, the policy committee sub-members expressed that they would prefer to have a policy that provided a very high level overview of the role of this superintendent, whether it's me or somebody else, and, and actually include it in the 2000 series as a, so the, there was a level of comfort with the policy subcommittee members that were present at the meeting, that we can still move forward with deleting this particular policy. But at the next policy subcommittee, I'm going to begin a draft of a, of a, of a, a larger, broader overview of just the roles and responsibilities that a superintendent has for a first read to our next meeting. But again, we're still going to go forward with deleting this one if people are okay with it. Similarly, this is another one that was brought forward for, as a recommendation for deletion, is 9425, requests for information. The reason that this was brought for deletion is because of the fact that it's, well, again, it falls into some of the basic responsibilities that I have. If board members either, if board members, I'm sorry, collectively say to me, Colin, we need you to get this information. I, I have to get you that information as superintendent, it's part of my job responsibility. So, and the other reason it was considered to be brought, or I recommended it for deletion based off of our attorney's recommendation is because of the fact that it really gets into information that if, if an individual board member makes a request. So it says, within two days of an estimated date for complete compilation, the report will be provided to the board member. Well, you all know, I don't give individual board members, one, some information, while I'm not giving it to everybody. And, and in, in all honesty, individual board members don't really have any specific authority. Of course, if board members come to me and say, Colin, could you get me this information? I'll work to get that information and provide it to everybody on the board. But there are instances where a board member may request information and my response might have to be make an FOI request because the, the, the request, you know, it would be obviously through conversations with the board chair. It could be a request that is so significant and so time consuming that we would obviously follow the procedures that are outlined in FOI and we would provide that information. But when you do FOI requests, it's not falling under the parameters of this particular timeline. Because it talks about within, you know, within two days of an estimated date for compilation of the report. And then it gets into some stuff. But basically what we're going to end up doing is still moving this forward for deletion. However, the members of the policy subcommittee wanted to include some language from this bylaw into bylaw 9135, which is roles of the board, roles of board members, if that makes sense. So we're kind of meshing the two together because this is such a small policy. And, and the changes would include language about a board member as a whole requesting information from the superintendent in order to make more informed decisions. But we would also include language that explained that individual board members have no authority. And that if an individual board members request information, they may be directed to do so in a manner consistent with any other member of the public, if the scope of the information request is significant and or time consuming. So we're trying to really clean up the policy book that has a lot of like little short ones like this. And we figured this is an easy one that we can incorporate into a different bylaw. So that'll go to the policy subcommittee at our next meeting as well. The next one is 9175, it's another very, well, it's an unnecessary policy. We budget for professional development, we budget for board member professional development, attended conferences. There's actually legislation around required Board of Education professional development. The state is supposed to put together a training that, and a professional development for all board members when they initially come in and get elected. We actually have a, we have a separate bylaw that I think is, it's about board member orientation. So as each of you came onto the board, if it was with me as a superintendent, I would meet with that new board member along with the board chair. And we would have a virtual meeting or an in-person meeting to go over just kind of what the roles and responsibilities of board members are. So this is, this, this one about board member professional development is unnecessary. And the policy subcommittee was agreeable that it is unnecessary and that it should be deleted. The next one is policy 4185, 4285. It is exposure control plan for bloodborne pathogens. And we are recommending this for deletion, not because we are saying we don't care how we would not expose people to bloodborne pathogens, but actually we revised this, a different policy, 4183, 4283 in May of 2024. And when we revised that policy, we actually included the exposure control plan in that updated policy. So the one that I'm recommending for deletion now, 4185 and 4285 is, it's just redundant information. It's contained in a completely separate policy. So again, those were discussed at length with our board policy subcommittee. And everybody was agreeable to the recommended changes as, that's part of that group. And if there's any concerns or questions or recommended changes, I can certainly hear those either now or in between now and our next meeting and we can discuss any recommended changes.
Anybody have any questions? Anybody online have questions? Let's just pan. I'm Mitchell, so what do we do without Eva?
She's, well, she's, you know, she can't get off that easy. No, she's, she's here. So there's, there's a couple of things that before we, yeah. First couple of things, and if people have specific questions, I think Michael Schleyhoff, Michael Schleyhoff is supposed to be part of this as well. I did share some of this information with board members in a separate communication. There's a couple of transfers that we're going to request be made that the board will have to take action on. They're separate from our typical financial reports. First one is outlined in enclosure 10.5A. It's a email, or I'm sorry, it's a memo from Michael Schleyhoff for to me. And it basically what we are looking to do is purchase a few pieces of equipment that were not a part of the scope of the original track project. Some, some pretty simple ones, but actually important because we just made a $1.5 million investment in a new track. And the things that we're looking to get are actually going to help really prolong the life of the track. The first one is dollies for soccer goals. So we had the rubberized surface placed, the D-zone rubberized surface. And when soccer games are not being played in the field, they'll often take those soccer goals and move them into the D-zone area. There are dollies that you can put at the base of those soccer goals, which allows you to simply tip them and then wheel them forward or wheel them backwards. We don't want those soccer goals being dragged across the rubberized surface of the D-zone because it will damage that rubberized surface. So that's one piece of equipment that we're looking to purchase. Another one is a, a rubberized track protection mat that rolls across the track when athletes are wearing cleats and need to cross. Again, it's just simply going to protect the track and prolong its life. And then finally, the last one is a replacement mesh sandpit cover over the long jump pit. The current one is damaged in multiple areas. So in totality, those prod, those items are about, just about $4,500. And there is a recommended motion because it would need to be transferred from one account to a separate account. And hopefully Eva, I captured that accurately.
You did a lovely job.
Thank you. Thank you, Eva. I appreciate it. It's always good, always good. And then just the next one, I'll just briefly explain for those of you that didn't see my email communication. You may recall that last spring I shared with the board some concerning pictures of the current condition of our loading dock. It's, it's in significant need of repair. And we, because of the fact that the track project came in not only on time, but under budget, we actually have money left from the track project that is sitting in capital or will be sitting in capital once the bills are all paid off. And in order for us to have a better sense of the scope of the work and the cost of the work that needs to be done for the loading dock repairs, we're looking to have money transferred from the track project, I believe it's from the track project to be able to do the engineering services. So all, it's approximately $3,000 that we're looking to have transferred. It would cover things like site surveys, preliminary design, preparation of bid documents, because this is a project that we'll have to go out to RFP for. So having these engineering services done now will really be, kind of have to do it. If we're going to look to include that project as a part of our CIP for this year, which I think we need to do. Obviously, we need to discuss this more with our new facility subcommittee. But, but it is really something that we will have to do. We weren't sure if, if it was going to be a part, if we bonded, if we'd included as a part of the bonding project. But because of the fact that we met it in September and discussed kind of pushing bonding back to, to, to really go through that process next year, we really think it's in our best interest to tackle that project next school year and getting all this information is critical from a time perspective to get that done. So the second motion for 10.56 is to reallocate those funds from the track project for a loading dock replacement project for $47,000. So again, Michael's here, Eva's here, we could try to answer any questions if anybody has any, but it's, it's pretty simple stuff.
Yeah, the advantage of having Miss Dawn is that you can have a quarter at any time. The scope doesn't change.
You got it. So you got it.
Okay, so do we have a motion?
Well, we can always discuss after the motion.
Okay, so do we have a motion to approve the transfer of $4,594.17 from the CIP maintenance, other professional tech services account to the CIP maintenance equipment account? Mike Sharon was first, second was Drew Golfen.
Yeah, well, I have a question, I have a question. So I, I don't understand why this is different from all the other typical movements we make.
That's why Eva, she, that, I had the same question and she'll do a much better job of it.
So basically, the project, the track project was all professional services. These items that we require are equipment, so they need to be classified in the correct object code for when reporting to the state of Connecticut and for auditory purposes.
That's why we always do so well with our audits.
But, but isn't that true of all this stuff in the other, what, I mean, what's the, all these other ones that we regularly do, we do like 30 or 40 at a time, are they?
Oh, no, 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 no. So this is separate, this is a separate fund. The other ones are in operating, I understand the question now. So the other ones are in the operating budget and these are additional ones for capital improvement. So we try to keep the funds separately.
Okay, got it. Okay, yep, CIP versus operating, that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Hey, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, so now we're looking for a motion to reallocate funds available from the athletic track replacement project to the loading dock replacement project in the amount totaling $47,000. Gabe Marks first.
I'll second, Mike Sharon's.
Mike Sharon's second. Any other discussion on that?
Yeah, I have a question. So we have a surplus of $19636.63 on the CIP portion that's allocated to the track, we're moving 47,000, what happens to the rest?
So when Michael tells me that the project is closed out, we will come back to the board either with a recommended motion to move the funds to unallocated or to put it back into the field because we borrowed from Peter to pay Paul, so to speak. So we had field improvements that we were going to do, we could probably put this money towards the loading dock itself. Any of those options are up for grab, but again, it would be a bigger discussion with the facility subcommittee on how best everyone wants to utilize the funding.
Okay, great.
Okay, any other questions? All right, all in favor? Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? All right.
I am happy to turn it over to Eva at this point.
All right, so in your enclosures, 10.5C, we have the expenditure and revenue report as of September 30th, 2025. I'm projecting a net favorable position of $62,796, yeah, let's try that again, $62,796. We are currently just getting the invoices for Magnet Schools that were as of October 1st. The invoices are coming at 58%, which is legislated that that's all they can charge us is 58% of the 2024 school year. So I'm happy to see that. So once we verify all the enrollment and that we will not have any more invoices, that money can then be at that time be freed up as well and hopefully discuss other ways to utilize the money that unfortunately we had to budget 100% because of the timing of legislative initiatives. The capital improvement fund, as you all heard, the track replacement is basically completed, the punch list items as well are almost complete. So that's done. The ADA compliance project at the middle school is still having some punch list items that are remaining. And other than that, I'm happy to answer any questions that the board may have at this time.
Sometimes in the past we've talked about it, what is the head count on students that have chosen to go to Magnet or Boag? I'm, I'm just curious.
I can get it to you, I don't have that in my rough top math.
No, no worries. I know in the past, it's not usually a large, under a dozen, I remember.
Typically. Correct, yeah, I, I, I don't think they're much different from where our projections are when we go through developing the budget, the budget. So I, but I can find out and get it.
Yeah, I'm just, I was curious whether I knew for everybody on the board.
So just for clarification, just so I make sure I understand this. When we set the budget for Magnet School and Boag for this year, we didn't know the full amount who would be charged. We estimated what the tuition would be and budgeted 100% of that.
Correct.
The legislation has come through now that says, whatever the bill is, we pay 58% of 2024 and the state pays the balance?
We're paying 52?
58%.
So yeah, we're paying 58% and the state's paying the 42. So that, basically, yeah, we weren't sure if the, if the funding was going to come through. What I, I've had conversations with Eva, I've had conversations with the other area superintendents and I said, hey, listen, you know, we weren't sure the first year we played it safe, we weren't sure the second year we played it safe. I think at this point, until we have a sense from the state whether or not the funding, like, I don't think we need to be so cautious and budget 100% moving forward, that, and that's going to be when we present the budget, we're going to budget for the 58%.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's been pretty consistent over the last three, two years.
Two years, it's been in existence for two years and because it's been since they said they were going to do it, but there was always like that trepidation of like, is the money going to be there? But now that they've come through consistently two years in a row, I think that we move forward and we don't need to be so cautious.
Okay.
All right, if there's no more discussion on that, enclosure 10.5D, which is food service. So at the end of September, we have a net loss of $51,119.65. And I did receive a question, so we, the school, we, regional school district eight are considered the school food authority. So the coffers fall to the school food authority. So we treat Marlboro Elementary Schools' sales for the school, for their lunches and breakfasts as we would our own. So it goes into one big account. Through the inter-district agreement that we signed, or interschool agreement, my apologies, that was signed, we negotiated that October 1st enrollment would be utilized if anything needed to be, because again, we have to maintain their kitchen, so to speak, and make sure that they have what they need to be able to make meals and serve meals. So we negotiated that we would use up the October 1st enrollment for the school year. If any expenditures needed to be made, it would be done on a prorated basis. However, Marlboro at this time still has whatever funds they had left in their coffers from last year that they would have to use up first. Are there any questions, additional questions that the board may have?
So, so just to be clear, Yvonne, in this one, are these just RAM numbers or do they?
That incorporates all, it incorporates the Marlboro Elementary School, Ram Middle School and Ram High School.
And, and in the beginning fund balance, does it include the Marlboro Elementary School beginning?
No, that is just ours.
So how does that fund balance get?
Because that, their fund balance was theirs. And so they were a separate school food authority, so I can't take their money to, to bring it over to mine.
Okay. So if, if for some reason their income versus expense, their revenue versus expense is, is negative, they, their expenses are higher than their revenue, we're going to eat that in our lines here on this exhibit.
Correct. Because it's our program now. So it's an hour, it's now it's an hour, it's not a them versus us.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure, I got the ducks.
Are there any further questions? Okay, so hearing none. 10.5E is the student activity, the student activity as of September 30th balances with the bank. Are there any questions that the board may have on student activity? So hearing none. 10.5F is the short-term investment fund. We redistributed $1,927.85 into this, into, into itself as of September 30th. Are there any questions that the board may have at this time? Okay, so hearing none. 10.5G is the budget appropriation transfers. So this transfer, this, this period that I'm bringing is July 1st through September 30th. And they total $499,251.80 and there's 29 transfers that require board consideration. Are there any questions before the board proceeds with a motion?
Just, just one, so we budgeted for three new security officers, safety officers?
Correct.
Yep.
And, and did we hire a fourth?
We did.
Okay, so I didn't realize that.
Yeah. Yeah, so that, that actually was one of the things that I had brought up to the board at one point where if that Voag agro-science funding came through fully, it would, it would have been enough to cover that additional before, the fourth one. And as I had explained to the board, my original vision for that position was to have four. And so the available funding made it possible for us to bring that to fruition this year.
I have one more question. In the past, I think we're going back a few years now. Eva, is the student activity fund always consumed at the end of a, of a given cohort year? Or is there dollars that carry over? I thought I remembered there were dollars that carry over.
So for, for, it depends on what class. So the graduating class, they have till December 30th of the year that they graduated to tell us how they would like their funds. Most of them get, I guess donated is a good word. So in recent years since COVID, they'll spread it out between other classes. It's rare that a class will take it to, to do reunions in the future because it becomes their money and then they have to figure out how to manage it. So they, they find ways to, they either donate the funds, donate it to the underclassmen. Either they give it all to the freshmen or they split it between the three grades. In the past, I believe there was money that they donated towards that electronic sign that is yet to be determined if we can have or can't have.
Right, that's, that's where I was going with it, Eva. I was going to test some memories and you've, you've come through for me. Is that something that at any point is worth revisiting? I mean, as time moves by, we have an opportunity to face a new planning and zoning committee.
So, so I think the short answer is yes, it's worthwhile to explore it. I am, I don't know how much optimism I have based off of, I say this very respectfully, we, I mean, the containment's thing that we had to build behind the.
Had to look a certain way.
Well, it, I mean, that was really a pretty simple project that didn't break any town ordinances.
Right.
What we're looking to do with the possibility of electric sign is like, I think it's possible, and I'm, and I certainly would like to move in that direction because I know that there's interest in doing it. What I can tell you is the funding that's available is going to, is not going to be by the student donations, is not going to be nearly sufficient. So I mean, I think that if that was something that the board was interested in moving forward with, it would have to be something where the board in some way, shape or form, whether it's through capital, whether it's through making a determination that we're going to allocate some money from the, the.
2%.
Thank you, the 2% account, whatever it's called now, is, is, that would really have to be a commitment. That, that if I knew that was something the board wanted to commit the funds to, I'd tell you, again, I'm, I think it's a rough estimate that it's like $30,000, $32,000 that the classes had donated in totality. It's just, that's not going to be enough when you factor in the cost of the sign, the labor, the construction of the, because they, they don't want aluminum thing around it, they're going to want to have it be brick and mortar so it fits in with the aesthetics. Like those are just some of the things that I've anecdotally heard.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up one last time while I'm still a member of the board. So the others who are here after I'm gone have heard of this because it is something that I think that the district can benefit from. Unfortunately, the, the community doesn't necessarily agree with us because the electronic nature of the sign, right? There's an ordinance, I think, or rules in town that don't allow electronic signage.
I'm rocked.
Which this would fall under. So maybe every few years we go back and we, we rattle the cage and we see if there's something that we can do. And I do recognize that we're probably talking to the tune of $100,000 for something like this, but it's, it's an effective means of communication to all traffic, to the students, to the parents. Right, I think many of you have seen the, the quantity of cars that come and go in the morning and the afternoon. I think most kids actually ride in a car instead of on the bus. But it's a great way to, to get word out on, on events, right? We talk an awful lot tonight about United, Drama United, we can advertise something like that out there, right? Get it out in the public, that much more, so I just did want to let it drop before I move.
Yeah, and I think one of the things that we had talked about too was when the district, when this, when the high school eventually becomes a a regional shelter, there's, there's a lot of value because we can put emergency information up on the sign that will not just be specific to RAM, but you know, reflective of the entire community. And so, you know, moving in the direction of obviously having the generator installed to the high school. So, I mean, that to me would be a good opportunity and a, and a really good leverage point to utilize with, with hopefully getting the the wheels turning. But I just made a note to myself, you know, I can follow up. I haven't had a conversation for probably about a year with the Hebron Town manager, but I can follow back with him, follow up with him and then also maybe reach out to members of the planning and zoning committee just to maybe talk to them.
It's just easy to lose track of these things and get a stiff nail on, right?
For sure.
Thanks, Colin.
Okay, so we need a motion to approve the transfers as presented totaling $499,251.80. First is Joe Coletti and second is Drew Golfen. Any other discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Anyone abstaining?
Thank you very much.
Other events?
Yeah, so we, we're moving along, you know, we're now into school dances which are happening. Had one earlier, and last week, which was apparently uneventful because I never heard from back in the day, which is always good, not to you. Yep, thank you very much. I always say to Penny on the weekend, Michael, I really hope I don't talk to you guys over the weekend. It worked out well that I didn't have to. It worked out well that I didn't have to get a phone call. You know, some, some of the things that are coming up, we obviously have election day, so we have a PD day in early November. We have parent teacher conferences coming up for the high school. We have our Veterans Day celebration for both the middle school and the high school coming up, which are big events. I, as I mentioned earlier, we have our Drama United program, which is going to be the 30th. I think Brianna mentioned it earlier on, but I certainly want to highlight that we do have our high school, is that high school and middle school on this Thursday? So high school and middle school concert in the auditorium this Thursday night and they are unbelievable, so looking forward to seeing that. And also parent teacher conferences for the middle school coming up in early November. And pretty soon Thanksgiving will be here. It's going by quick already, it's hard to believe. And that, that's pretty much it.
Student discipline?
Yeah.
10.2?
Yep, so in the, in your packets is enclosure 11.2. It provides information about student discipline through the months of September, so the first month of school for both the middle school and the high school. And that's luckily so far things are going okay. I, you, you do realize every time I talk about student discipline, like, oh, things are going okay so far. You realize it, yeah. Every time I ask the principals on a Friday, hey, it's been a quiet day so far. Michael wants to throw me out of his office because I'm jinxing. And so, you know.
Great, so that brings us to the end. If you have a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Mike Sharon, a second.
I'll say.
Joe Coletti, all in favor?
All right.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you.
Thank you, everybody.